And we're live, we're good to go.
Thanks Jacob. Good evening Mayor and Council, this is the October 28th Charter Review Briefing. We have our consulting attorney on the line who will walk us through sections 60 through 66 of the Charter. Following that, we will discuss parking lot items and following that, we'll see if there are any additional Charter topics to discuss. So with that, I will turn it over to Cliff.
All right, let me get down here and share the screen. Charter review, that looks like the... Why that's different? Looks like that screen too, okay. Share. That should work, right? Do you guys see it now, yes? Okay, let me move it where I can see it in front of me so I can look at the camera and the amendments at the same time. Okay. So this is maybe the shortest meeting of all, at least in terms of what we've got in the memo. There were no staff or council changes to either sections.
Cliff, we're only seeing your desktop, your spooky desktop, we're not seeing...
Oh, well, that's a good one. I mean, I like that one.
Yeah, it's spooky, it's appropriate, but we're not seeing the text.
See if I can figure out how to, what I did wrong here, okay. Share screen.
While Cliff is sharing the...
Okay, all right. We have to stop that share. Then I'm gonna share and try to, I do, all I do is move it, but I think this is what I should have done right here, let's see. Did that work? Yep, that's right, okay. Okay, someone's got some sound going on there, but anyway. What I was about to say, or trying to say, is that this may be the shortest record meeting for at least the stuff that's in the memo. Both sections 60 through, all sections 60 through 62, there were no recommended council changes for the record. Those are, involve elimination of city departments, continuation of contracts titled the property. So, has anybody got any comments or discussion on 60? I'm not seeing any hands. 61? And 62? All right. The next one was section 63, continuation of former Charter provisions. We recommend deleting all of this because it is automatic that changes that are in the Charter that don't change things that existing will still continue to stay there. And that's why, as Mike can attest, when I sent him today a draft of the amendments that we've done so far, you see underlined for new language, strike through for language that's being taken out. Everything that's left alone, meaning neither stricken out or underlined, is the old and it will continue in existence. So that is the reason for this elimination, does anybody have any questions on this? All right. Again, on section 64, 65, there were no recommended changes. Those for the record are ordinances preserved and rights of officers and employees. No need to make changes there, but for the record, anybody any questions on 64? And 65? I see no hands. All right, so that takes us to the last section, at least in terms of our sequential marching on through the Charter. Pending matters, again, this is an obsolete provision because this would have dealt with at the time. Pending lawsuits and contracts that are in place and things of that nature, but that would have been, I didn't do the math, but what, 50 years ago? 60 years ago? So this is no longer a matter that is, needs to be preserved and so it can be eliminated. Any questions about that? Mike, I'm done. We actually are, I can go right into the, the parking lot issues now if you want to, if that's appropriate.
Please do.
Okay. So the first one, I don't have a screen for that, so let me stop the share. But the first one that came up was in section one, and I don't know anything about it other than it is the potential to change the name of the city to what I do not know. So I can't lead the discussion on it, but that is, for a topic starter, what I recall being the issue.
And Cliff, I'll add a little bit more for council. Staff has not had an opportunity to do a survey of our residents as to how they feel about potential change. We've been a little bogged down with getting the new website fired up. But with that being said, we did receive, I would say probably somewhere between six and 10 emails from residents who had seen the article about a potential name change, and the majority of them did not favor a name change at this time. Again, it was obviously a very limited number. Given the fact that we are still looking at doing Charter Review activities over the next several months to get to a point of wrap up, we would look for any direction that council has on this particular topic.
Don't everybody speak at once, I can't keep up.
Would you like us to go, Mayor Hoffman?
I'm trying, sorry, it's my first time zooming on this particular device. Um, I, I think it's, I, I think because the message got out ahead of us and the timing of that message came at the same time that six school names were being changed. There was a very much a knee jerk backlash reaction. I got a lot of private emails and phone calls that were supportive. But I just think the timing and the fact that the message kind of got out of control, it would say, I think we just put it in long-term parking? Or off-site airport parking and, and pick it back up at a future time. But I definitely, just with the fear that surrounded that, don't change anything. My favorite were, were the people that said, "It's always gonna be Jack's Beach." Well, it's not Jack's Beach now, but it could be. So I think there's still room for that discussion, but I don't think it's anytime soon.
Counselor Nichols?
I mean, I'm not opposed to going forward and just doing a, you know, doing more of a review on the, on the possible names and, you know, the, a lot of people were saying that it was related to Andrew Jackson and those changes, which, you know, that does, I mean, in my view has nothing to do with the changing, just that it's a, I don't know, I've always thought it was a good idea, so I don't have a problem with staff moving forward, figuring out if we're gonna be doing other interviews of, and taking polls on some people, including some of that in there.
Any other council thoughts on that topic? Counselor Mazel?
I kind of agree with Mayor Hoffman, maybe put it in a parking lot somewhere at the airport and then come back to it. I also receive emails, people against the name change, and maybe one or two that were kind of in favor of changing Jack's Beach name. So, that's it, we could put it in the back parking lot somewhere.
Counselor Golding?
I just wanna say that I concur with the mayor and I'm fine with putting it on a, on a longer term discussion at another time. Personally, I feel like we have a lot of stuff going on right now and I just don't know if it's, if we can really devote the time to it that we should, when we've got a lot of other things we need to be devoting our time to.
And for what it's worth, I can remind you all that we are going to be going through what at least at last count was a 22-page set of amendments that are being proposed, try to figure out what you want on the ballot for the next election and what you want to propose at a future date. And so that is gonna, it's not like this won't come back around, it will come back around and you can decide at that point what you want to do. But I would suspect, don't know, that name change is gonna get a lot of attention. Mike, I'm not seeing any more hands, so do we go to the next one?
I think we go to parking lot item number two.
And the number two item from memory is the item regarding the liquor license, liquor sales license limitation based on the 1950 census. We had a brief, albeit spirited discussion of this, I think, at our very first or either first or second Charter meeting about whether, and that it landed in the parking lot and whether the number of 1950 census should be updated to current or should be changed to some other number, a static number of no more than X or some other metric. But this is you guys' issue to discuss, so whoever wants to be first, I'm looking for hands.
And I would, I'll add on to what Cliff was saying. Staff did provide you with some supplemental information to help you make a decision. We provided you with the 1950 census number and the calculation based on Charter numbers. We also provided what that number would look like if you plugged in the 2020 census. And we also provided you with a, sections of our code which talk about citing of alcohol establishments with regards to distance separations and buffers from not only one another, but from also churches, schools and other types of institutions. And then finally, we provided you all with a graphic map showing where the liquor establishments are currently located within our city, what zoning districts they are allowed to be within, and where there are currently gaps, where those possible gaps could be filled in. While I don't have it pulled up in front of me, I think the number of additional locations that could be cited was estimated at somewhere around a half dozen, somewhere between five and eight, depending on actual physical measurements of door-to-door of the existing establishments, we obviously didn't go to that level. So there was even a recommendation of some of the potential numbers that council could look at if you wanted to change as well. Not seeing any hands.
So how do I, does that say we're gonna leave it at 1950 census and let history continue?
Counselor Jansen, followed by Mayor Hoffman.
Yeah, so I have the email pulled up in front of me and I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the, the approximate addition of anywhere between five and eight licenses, probably leaning more towards the five side than the eight side. And just doing the math of the current census, a little bit of division and figuring out what that is per capita. But and it was a lot of good work that was put in that from, from Heather, I do appreciate that, but I'm for that, for the additional five licenses.
Mayor Hoffman, followed by Counselor Mazel?
I'd, I'd like to maybe dedicate 20 minutes or so of a briefing to specifically discussing this because I want to make sure that we think through other things that would impact that, you know, if we change land development code, does that change, you know, the 500 feet rule would change, change that, so if, you know, I want, I don't want to make one change somewhere that could be, you know, we could shift gears somewhere else and that changes it, so I just, I want to have a little more thoughtful conversation with Heather, you know, at the table to help us think through those eventualities, because I, I think once we put it in the Charter, we should be relatively sure that it's pretty, pretty rock solid, I would say.
And Mary, you bring up a good point, that the map that we generated for you and the gaps that the map show are based on the current buffering standards or distance separation standards. Clearly, if this council or a future council change those standards, that would affect the placement of future establishments. If any existing establishments went away, it may prohibit new establishments from coming back into those locations. Counselor Mazel, followed by Counselor Golden?
I agree with Mayor Hoffman and also think if we do decide on a number that we are doing the right thing for the community in the city of Jacksonville Beach. We don't, I know I'm in the business, so, I mean, I just want to make sure that we don't become a quarry city adding eight, 10 more licenses just because it's in the census or whatever form we can move it. I'm comfortable with maybe adding three or five more if possible. Those are just my comments right now.
Thank you, Counselor Golden, followed by Counselor Nichols.
I would support discussing this further in a briefing. My reasoning being that I would like to hear from staff, like in particular our police department, get their thoughts on, you know, if they're willing to share their thoughts about what they think the impact might be to adding more liquor licenses and any other, any of our other departments that we think might have some, you know, impact from it, just to make sure, like what Fernando was saying that, you know, and Mayor Hoffman was saying that we, that we understand the impact of the, of the decision before we move forward with it.
Counselor Nichols?
I'm actually a little bit torn on this subject. I don't think bars that are just bars really adds a ton to our community. You know, but I also think that the established monopoly and how those people acquired them, my guess is that the original people that acquired them were kind of involved, involved in making the rules, so. And the fact that our liquor licenses out here are, I don't know, 750 a million dollars and for the rest of Duval County, they're 100,000, 150, that there's some kind of, that, that it just doesn't add up to me and something's not right with the situation. I would very much prefer us working on the SRX for the restaurants to reduce the size, because I'd much rather have, have alcohol served where food is served in restaurants and, you know, be able to monitor those a little bit better and reduce the seating size. So that's where we would expand it. Just from a personal level, I, I don't know if, I don't know if more, more businesses that are just alcohol bars bring much to the community. So, I don't, I'm, like I said, I'm kind of torn and I just, but I just also don't like the fact that there's a kind of a monopoly situation set up on the current, the current situation, so I think we need to look at it as a whole, not just the COP four licenses that we need to look at all of the other licenses combined to really get the best value from our, for our citizens.
Counselor Dumont?
I agree with a lot of what I'm hearing, but also what I'm hearing is we want a briefing, 20 minutes on this for briefing, to better understand how it connects to the poss, any possible LDC changes. But then the LDC changes with regard to SRX licenses is also at play. And what I'm hearing is, this isn't necessarily at this point in time, a Charter issue. This is an LDC issue that in an additional two to three years' time, you, we might want to look at, you know, in the, it's in that same long-distance airport lot with the name change, whether to start looking at in the future, do we want to change the number of bars? But I think that that question comes after we have looked at the LDC and we have incorporated a new LDC to then understand what the implications would be and how we would change the number of four COP licenses.
Hey, Ms. Hoffman?
Yeah, I just, I mean, for me, the biggest thing is just, it is a much bigger question and, and I've always said it's not a, really a matter of the number, the total number to me, because I can definitely see both sides. But the fact that we're referencing the 1950 census, if we get through this entire Charter Review and leave that in there, I just, I, it just seems very strange to me that, that we would do that, because it's, it's such an irrelevant reference at this point. So I don't know if maybe we just, we, but we have to, if we took that out, we have to replace it with something, so we would have to figure out what that looks like.
Well, are you saying we should just replace it with the number of current COP four licenses until we get through the LDC changes to figure out what any implication would be for changing that number?
I mean, potentially. Sorry, that was a really loud motorcycle driving down Beach Boulevard.
So your issue is just that 1950 is mentioned?
That's one of my issues, but I think we should have a thoughtful conversation on if we take out, based on one of every 500 people in the 1950 census, what do we replace it with? Do we just say it's a flat number? I don't know, and I think that that's the conversation that, that we should have. And if we want to have that right now, if we want to have that further down the road. But I just, I feel like this is something that, that we need to take a look at, at least changing that language so that it doesn't reference the 1950 census.
Well, I, I agree with that, but I also think that before we get to what we change, take it out and put it for the number that we currently have. But before we change the number, we need to know the implications of the, how we change that number in the future and we don't know those implications before we do any changes to the LDC.
Well, why does it, does it have to be in the Charter at all?
As a limitation, no, the problem, the reason things like this and height limitations get put in charters is because voters get wary of politicians who can vote by three and change things. So that's the reason, it, but no, as, as it doesn't have to, I don't know of any charters, I'm sure there probably are some, but I don't know of any that I've represented where there's a similar restriction.
I just think this is an issue that is worth more, a little more conversation, a little more focused conversation.
And I would, I would add this to the mix of discussion here. When you're talking about numbers and trying to come up with what metric you would use, the discussion about the LDC is potentially very helpful. And that is because, depending on how you set up your LDC on a go-forward basis and what uses are gonna be permitted and what uses aren't gonna be granted and where, you may have a physical space cap that will solve the issue in a way that you'll be happy with. Of course, going back to what I said initially, the problem with using a LDC limitation is, just like any other ordinance, it can be changed by a majority vote. I think I saw Mr. Jansen next, I don't know, did you, you agree, Mike? Okay, and then Ms. Golding?
So, I, I do think it should be pushing it into the parking lot and let's talk about it some more. I, I just don't want to put it in long-term parking, because we have, we have some development going on right now in our downtown district and some outside of it with the beach pole and that, and things like that, which could have an impact on it as well, so. Albeit, a good conversation to have somewhere down the road and let's, let's think it through. I just don't want to kick it that far down the road.
Before we go to Counselor Golding and to answer a little bit of your question, Counselor Jansen, the next of the, the final of the parking lot items with regards to height, we are looking at having an open house with the community probably in the month of January. So there's always the possibility that we could bring the issue of both height and alcohol back to a council briefing after that open house is held. Wrap up those two items and still have enough time to go through the language adoption in advance of May when we have to get valid initiatives to the supervisor of elections. So if council wanted to maybe take the holidays to think about this a little bit more, that wouldn't necessarily be a bad pause, you know, I recognize the information we gave you was quite a bit and you might want to go back and look at the LDC and see if 500-foot distance separations door-to-door is something that is should be changed or kept the same, I don't know. It seems to be working so far, but this would give you all a little bit more time to maybe digest, digest the data and talk to your neighbors, talk to business owners and see what they think about potentially increasing those licenses and whether or not the distance separation should stay the same from an LDC component.
Yeah, I like that idea.
You know, you can, you can increase the number by 20, but if there's only space for five to go in, that's 15 licenses that can't go anywhere. The only way you can get those extra 15 on the ground is by changing the LDC requirements. And that means now you may have bars that are very close proximity next to each other. You may end up with areas where there are multiple bars all lined up in a commercial plaza. I don't know if that, if that's what the intent of the community is going forward.
I mean, that's a great idea, combine them both for that one workshop and, and open house in January.
Counselor Golding, followed by Counselor Mazel?
Several things I want to touch on. So my understanding, and I think I've said this before, this was put in the Charter because the citizens wanted to have the say as to whether these, the number of alcohol licenses changed in our community. I, I agree with Ms. Dumont. I have, I would have concerns, if, if we're gonna be doing work on the LDC and if changes to the LDC would impact, you know, would impact what happens in our community based on, you know, if, if we, if we end up saying, you know, X number of licenses, but the LDC, you know, the LDC changes actually could, could actually increase the impact in our neighborhoods or, or throughout the community. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable until we know what, what's happening with the LDC and how that is going to impact this decision. I would support putting the number that we have right now, if we want to get the reference to the 1950s out of there and just, I mean, if, and that's how we move forward until we resolve what the LDC is gonna look like. And the, and I agree with Mr. Nichols that, you know, I'm not sure that adding more bars to our community is really what, what we want to do. I, I would want to see restaurants, I agree, restaurants with, restaurants with alcohol that are serving food, I'm fine with that, but do we really want more bars in our community? And to Mr. Jansen's point, are, if, you know, the map that the staff gave us, I mean, the downtown area is, is pretty locked down. I mean, as far as like being able to add any more bars, so with the redevelopment that we're doing in the downtown area, I don't see that adding any bar licenses are gonna help with the downtown redevelopment at all. So I really feel like this is something that needs, there needs to be a sequence and if we're gonna be changing the LDC, this decision needs to come after that.
Counselor Mazel?
Question? Slash, kind of a comment. I know, based on the 1950 census, obviously it's one, one license per each 550 people, persons. If, if we come to a consensus that, hey, we don't need any more alcohol licenses and we just updated to a 2020 census to say, whereas one license per 1,500 person, would that be something that, will that be able to come to fruition? If we come to a census that we don't want any more alcohol licenses, we just update the number to the 2020 census?
What, what my proposal, the staff was going to be, to council on the intro, going to be that staff will draft language that converts the existing number to modern census to be up. And then if council wanted to revisit this after the first of the year, when we have our debrief after the height open house, if there's an appetite to increase the number, we can then change the ratio or we can keep it as is and then it's the same number of liquor licenses going forward, but at a minimum, we could draft the ordinance so that it maintains status quo just with updated census numbers as opposed to the 1950 number. And then if there's a change and there's an appetite to add five licenses, we'll change the ratio that it adds five. But at least a language that reflects updated numbers with regards to the census, if that's okay with council at this point in time.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Counselor Nichols?
Mike, my question is, let's say we add one to five, how do those get distributed? Do we auction them off? I mean, they've got a pretty substantial value to them if they can be utilized. So I mean, if we decide there's gonna be, who gets them?
That's a, that's a good question and I'm gonna defer to our consulting attorney, Cliff Shoppin.
To the extent I understand it, we don't issue the licenses. What we do is say, how many people would be able to go to the state with their business and apply for it? Am I missing something? I mean, we're, we're not the, the Bureau of Alcohol. So if I understand the way it actually works, they go to Tallahassee, but they can't go unless we say that they would fit in a zone in which a license, like the ones that they would be trying to get, would be A license like the ones that they would be trying to get would be appropriate, because I think that's one of the questions they have to add. Ask, answer on the application.
Yeah, they have to have sign off by in development.
Right.
Establishment location of the license meets planning and zoning requirements.
So I think that's the way it works, but I have a, a side question that I may be. I may be the only one that doesn't know the answer to, and that is, are you already capped out on using the nineteen fifties metric and ma- and mathematics? Are the number of current license holders maxed out, or do you have some in a pool left over that haven't yet been used?
Oh, no, they're, they're, they've been maxed out forever. That's why the prices, you know, if they sell them, they're seven hundred and fifty thousand or whatever. I mean. They're insanely expensive. And so if we put it out there and somebody goes and picks one up for. Twenty grand or whatever the state charges and somebody just paid seven fifty for it, there's going to be some upset people running around.
And that's, that's a good que- that's why I was going next, because uh, you might, you'll, you, you might not get the backlash backlash you expect. Uh, it may be uh, angry bar owners who paid a bunch of money and have a, have to pay off that license. Uh, more so than the citizens, but you know, that, that remains to be seen. I was just curious because I had never heard anyone say, hey. You know, there, nobody could come in here even if they wanted to and open a new bar. And if that's the case, then certainly it makes it, as you've already stated, a very valuable commodity.
Yeah, they cannot, currently they cannot. What is there? Twelve or there's either twelve or thirteen. I can never remember the number, but. Um, yeah, so we can't do that. And I mean, people have done it with S R Xs and tried to play the. Uh, restaurant name only game, and I think we've got rid of most of those. And I think we're in a situation that's much better. I would just, I, I, I don't know. There's just a lot of different areas, especially if we just add a couple that. I, I don't know. I'm just, I want to make sure it's done equitably.
Yeah, I can't say I've been through a situation where we've expanded all licenses. And whether or not it's just a rat race, first come, first serve at the state. Or if they do some type of a lottery, I have no idea how that's.
Well, let, let me suggest to you, the, the state is only interested in the applicant and their qualifications. And part of that is the zoning. So I don't, I think it would be a first come, first served, but not based on. Who applies first. It's for, it's who has property in an area under the code where they could use a. Where a bar use would be permitted. Uh, and, and that, 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 and that is no longer capped by the number in our charter. And so if we say that now we're going to use the nineteen sixty census. Maybe we're not going to go all the way to two thousand twenty one or two thousand twenty, but we're going to go to nineteen sixty. So now. Maybe that adds a license or two. Okay. Then it'll be a question of who is in a location or can buy a location. Where bar use is a permitted use or liquor store is a permitted use, which, whichever this license would cover or both. And securing the location where the zoning would be okay so that a zoning official would be able to sign off on it. And then going to the state and being first in line to get the license. But again, without the property applying for the license will be a good.
I definitely want to drill down on some of that just to make sure if we do it, it's done fairly and. I don't know, the more I think about it, just having standalone bars doesn't add much to the community from my position.
Hey, Corey, I just wanted to add real quick. I know on the alcohol licenses and the price of them. So. The value goes up when the demand is there and there's very limited. So like when you were saying here at the beaches, if you want to buy a license, you can spend. Close to half a million, but if you go to Jacksonville, you spend a hundred, two hundred thousand. Here at the beaches, everyone wants to open up a, a bar. So that's why the value goes up. And it's just like real estate. So if we were to increase the alcohol licenses, that value might go down a bit. And if we were to increase it to electoral census and follow the nineteen fifty census. We'll have what, twenty, forty licenses and those licenses may, may be worth like forty thousand. So. I just was trying to answer your, uh, your question on the uh, price of the licenses.
Counselor Dumont.
Uh, thank you. Is there a reason why we have to attach this to a census?
Oh, no.
Twenty census, nineteen eighty census.
Right.
Or any of the other ones. Just, just put a number out there. As long as, eh, the, the reason why one would. Logically, the reason why one would attach it to a census would be that that number would change in future years. So if the number go, if the number of the population goes up, the number of X, whatever you're attaching to the census. Or consumer price index or any of those other things would also increase. But this is just a static number for an arbitrary number. So we can just put the number in there. There's no need to include. Uh, it with the census. If we were to include it with the census, it should be a percentage of the census. Change that, that is um, noted to change every ten years when the census numbers change.
Well, let me, this is a very important question. So uh, all ears. The, first of all, there's a, there's a couple of bad words when you're a government lawyer. One is arbitrary, the other is capricious. You don't want to be either of those things when you're drafting ordinances. And so. If that is the direction, i.e. coming up with a number. Then typically, and I, I cannot admit to have done the research on this because I haven't been turned loose on. But the first thing I'd want to know is what data we could find. Because I have the same concern candidly about the, the data point that we're using now. That would support that the number or the cap, if you will, isn't arbitrary and capricious and is somehow related to a metric. That we would look at in terms of providing legislation, typically health, safety or welfare. And so looking at the situation, one of the things we would want to do is, let, I mean, again. I think it's one per five hundred, isn't that it, Mike, the way it reads now? So maybe there's data. God, there's data for all kinds of things. It would say, we find that in communities where there's one per thousand. Uh, the crime rate is X, whereas if there's a one per five hundred, the crime rate is Y. Uh, X is better than Y, therefore that's why we're switching to a number that lowers the amount of licenses or something like that. So. Before you just want to pull out a number out of the air and say, well, it's thirteen now, let's round it up to fifteen and call it a day. We probably ought to do the lifting to determine what we would be able to point to as a reason for putting that there. Um, and I don't think that that was done uh, candidly back in the nineteen fifties. Uh, I suspect it was more of a, well, here's a metric, let's use it. But we have clear constitutional principles now in play, not necessarily an application to liquor licenses. Specifically, but generally in the area of municipal legislation. Where when we start talking about things that amount to property rights or arguably are property rights. The, the arbitrary and capricious standard is one that's well known. And it's overcome by regulation that's based on health, safety and welfare. Um, and so those are the kind of things we would want to look at. It, it may well be if I start peeling away the layers of the onion, that we would be able to find out that. No, this is something where you and your community can actually say X, but as an example of where you can't say X. The regulation of adult entertainment. We know from the U- the United States Supreme Court that you can't say no adult entertainment. Per se, you can say these are the areas where it'll be zoned for and they become impracticable for the people to actually use. Um, and so we, if, if you want to come up with a number not tied to the census. We probably need to do the legal research to make sure that it would withstand the challenge. Because right now, we may be really on solid ground based on the passage of time and so forth, but we may just be. You know, a challenge away from something we, we didn't anticipate and we didn't create. It's just been there for a long time and we've kind of. Eh, neglected it.
So Cliff, if we were to change the nineteen fifties language to a different year. Without. Research supporting that number per X population for a new year census. Wouldn't we still be in the same place?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. So if you were, i- if before we were beginning, if the idea is leave it alone. We, we're, we don't really do anything because it is what it is. But if we're going to start changing it, whether it's by coming up with an actual number, moving it to a new census number. Or something along those lines, then it's going to be more than just. Community reaction that needs to be the underpinning of the ordinance. It is things that we can articulate, I think, again, subject to being proven wrong when I do some research. But generally speaking, and like I see, I use adult entertainment as an example because you think, oh, we can say no to that. And, and you know, we can't say no to that. As a blanket statement. It's a freedom of speech, it's freedom of expression and all that other stuff. But there are ways to regulate it as long as those ways are based in things that are not arbitrary and capricious. And so. It, it, pick a direction you want to go in, and then we can start assembling the data to try to see what's out there that will support those conclusions. And it may be that, you know, based on, instead of the census of X number of licenses per thousand. You know, you, it could be when you have a city, city of twenty six thousand or twenty seven thousand, whatever Jack's Beach is. Uh, that, you know, crime statistics show that if you have more than this number of bars, here's your crime rate. And if you have less of this number of bars, your crime rate's down here, there's your justification. That's the kind of stuff we will want to look at in addition to just coming up with language.
But that compiling that data also takes times and I, and we are on a timeline here to be able to get this on the ballot. Or increase the number in how we are going to justify any change in the charter. To be able to reduce our risk as a city for um, in relation to that change. Uh, so with what Cliff is saying, it's far more complicated than. Adding another bar or keeping it this way and at this current number and just dropping the census or getting rid of nineteen fifty because we don't like nineteen fifty. It was a bad decade.
Some of the dead stuff that, that you guys maybe. And understandably pay little attention to that lawyers like Sandra and I would pay a lot of attention to are the whereas clauses, you know. And those are there as an explanation of what is the justification for this regulation. So when it says whereas the city council is considered blah, 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 and whereas it finds it the interests of the citizens. You know, to regulate the safety and health of the citizens and above, all those things that are the whereas clauses are also. The legislative findings that are your attempts to justify why you're implementing a regulation. And so in this charter change. It'll be, it would be a part of a much bigger set of ballot questions. So the research that would go into it, instead of being as a separate ordinance, uh, just for this one thing on a ballot. Would be part of the overall work of the charter review. And so we would need to go about. Finding what's out there that discusses issues like this. Now. When you say it's going to take some time, it, yes, is the answer, but not, I don't think as long as, as you need. That what takes time is if you have to commission your own study, but there may be sufficient data already out there in the marketplace. That we can get our hands on it. Um, and so I, I wouldn't promise you that it can be done quickly. I don't know that. I haven't done the research. But it's not an uncommon issue to try to look at what are the effects of alcohol sales on things like criminal activity. Uh, pedestrian safety and things of that nature. You know, valuation in neighborhoods and, and things of that nature. So it may be that we can pull together some of those things and have a, a reasonable justification. That is neither arbitrary nor capricious fairly quickly. So I would say to you. In continuing down the road of decision making, if you decide we want a hard cap of X. Let's see what the research tells us about what there is that would, we could point to to justify. And if the idea is no, we want a floating cap based on population, again, I'm, I don't have a preference. I don't live in Jack's Beach. I wish I could afford that. Um, but whatever it is, the point is that once we know the direction, then we'll see what the research tells us about whether it can be supported.
Good, thank you.
I don't know whether Mr. Jansen was first or Mr. Nichols was first.
I think I was. Um, so Georgia stole my thunder about tying into the census. So thank you. Uh, I wanted to get that question answered. I appreciate that. And the only other thing I would add was that we should. Put some kind of um. Language in there to review this, that, that is, a review is done more frequently than seventy one years. Uh, whether it's five years and I charge to do or, or some whatever that number happens to be. Tie it to the census. If it's that, then it's every ten years or, or that we review it more frequently than seventy one years and that we have language that covers that.
I think that actually may come up uh, after we get through this third uh, parking lot issue, because this is also a section of the meeting where we can talk about any additional items. That bring to the table and that would apply to the entire charter in that, and having reviews every so often could be one of those issues. Uh, Mr. Nichols.
I was going to say, if we decide not to make any changes uh, that we're not going to add. Then we might as well just leave the language the way it is so we don't open any can of worms.
Yeah.
Having a reference to nineteen fifty, but it really doesn't matter that much.
I don't see any more hands. Do you, Mike?
Don't see any hands. I'm also not sure that we have a clear direction.
Okay, well, let me see if I can recap.
Please do.
What I think I heard was they want the briefing on the issue of licenses. And perhaps in that briefing, uh, either Sandra, if you choose, or I can do it if you like. See if we can find some things out there that talk about sale of liquors in bars and its impact. On things that I know you can regulate around. Uh, criminal activity, uh, pedestrian safety. Yes, noise, perhaps, other things of that nature. Um, and see what's out there that we couldn't potentially lean on if we decided. Hey, we want to change the cap, but here's what we want to change it to, either smaller or, or, I guess you can go smaller, but. But you could certainly uh, say we're going to make it a hard cap of X based on this data and our population size of twenty five, twenty six, whatever it is, thousand. Um, and see what's out there. Um, and if we get to a comfort zone where we say, we have some pretty good data out here that shows that this. Regulation makes sense, then, okay, how do you want to go about coming up with that number? So I, I think we can do that in short order. And also, if we're wrong, if I can't find the data, the only other option that I'm aware of, although it would probably be. I don't know how expensive, but it, there would be a cost associated with it. It is commission your own study.
Uh, do you all like the idea of having Cliff and Sandy doing some background research over the next few months? And see what they can identify in terms of justification for bars slash liquor licenses? I'm seeing a couple of head nods, thumbs up.
Can we also have them look into um, the reducing the seats, the seating um, necessary for S R X licenses? I know they've done it in downtown Jacksonville, Avondale and a couple of other places as well. And if we were going to increase something, I'd. Personally, I think I'd prefer to increase that than increase the C O P four.
Well, that would be outside the realm of the charter review, and I know that that's um, something that I'd be bringing back to council at.
Okay.
Future with regards to the seating.
Thank you.
Their, their goal, uh, when used in the way they're intended is to achieve other city goals by. Let allowing a developer to get more height or intensity density. Uh, under what otherwise would be a hard cap than they would otherwise get. By doing something else the city needs. So it's using height as essentially your currency. Um, by which you would obtain in return wider sidewalks, uh, regional retention pond. Uh, under, underwater storm drains that need to be replaced or whatever, a new park. Um, so that, that's generally how these things are used. Uh, as I mentioned, I think the last time this came up, they can be very controversial. I think I've been explained how so. Um, but they are considered a tool. Um, they can be a very good tool. They can also be a very misunderstood tool. And I think I explained to you too, that in one of my cities, the city of Maitland, it became a very divisive tool because. Those that were against it were really against it. Um, and so that's the floor for the discussion, um, and that's why it was put in the parking lot. So here you go.
And Cliff, I'll supplement that. There's a document that I don't think I have sent to you yet. And that is, um, some modifications to fifty two B. Based on council feedback when we discussed section fifty two with them. Uh, I will send that file over to you now, uh, while we're eating, but effectively we modified the text. Uh, to clarify that it's within the CBD as such boundaries exist as of January first, twenty twenty two. And we also clarified that, um, the height bonus terminates with the dissolution of the downtown CRA. Either in whole or for that portion covering the CBD. So there are some tweaks to the language as it's shown on the screen right now. Uh, the intention is that we have a public open house somewhere in the month of January. And that the proposed charter language for fifty two B, along with some, um. Possible incentive eligibility criteria to achieve that height bonus could be shared with the public. And council could have, uh, an opportunity to see if. Whether or not this language hits the mark based on community feedback or whether or not it needs further adjustment based on what the public tells them. And I see Councilor Nichols has his hand raised.
Uh, the only other one in there that I think is still open for a discussion is the, the total height. I mean, if somebody's going to come in and put some parking on a, on a floor, I don't know. I've started leaning towards. You know, a cap of seventy or something, but I think we just need to talk about that further as well.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised, but is council comfortable with, um, moving forward with this language until we have the. Unity open house and seeing what the public reaction is. I'm seeing a couple of heads nod, seeing a bunch.
Well, with that, because I know you all are excited about this screen, I will figure out how or try to figure out how, ah, stop, share. There we go. So you don't have to look at that anymore. Um, and Mike, the only other thing that I can recall, and I don't know whether you wanted to do this now or set a meeting for. Uh, but someone, I think Ms. Golding asked about additional items that could be brought forward. Um, if anybody has the additional items where they want to, uh, discuss whether something can or should be added to the charter. As long as, uh, the floor is, uh, okay for that, I'm more than willing to entertain those things now.
I see for Golding's hand up.
Um, thank you. So, um, Cliff, in our last meeting, uh, you kind of touched on the question about. Um, the Florida statute saying that, um. We need to have an ordinance or in charter what we do in the event that, you know. We have less than two people or whatever, or, or in the, in the case of, say, we have one candidate. And then that candidate dies or whatever, and now you have no, you have nobody who's going to fill that vacancy. Um, you were gonna touch on that, I think, in this meeting, maybe?
Yeah, we, I looked at that and I, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Um, it is sort of an open question. Whether or not something is needed or not, and let me explain why. What the statute appears to say plainly is that there needs to be a provision. For when, uh, let's suppose only one of you qualifies for your seat. Uh, so essentially you would be running unopposed, but before qualification ends. You change your mind, something bad happens, uh, a husband or a wife gets transferred and you're going to move. So never mind, and nobody else qualifies. The idea would be that there should be an ordinance or a charter provision. It can be either one. That says in that instance, here's how we, we're going to fill that gap. And my suggestion obviously would be perhaps by appointment, but you don't want to have to have a special election just because. The qualifying period is too short, you know, there's a whole lot of things that would have to go into it. However. What I would point out and why it's not exactly clear to me with a hundred percent certainty that you must do this. Is because right now we know that if we were past the qualification period. So that someone would have been declared elected and a vacancy then appeared. So if it was not. During the qualifying period, but just after the close, qualifying closed on Friday and Monday morning, the candidate says, never mind. We know that in that situation, the council or main council would report, would appoint the successor. So this, this interim period, which is a very brief period. It is not like there isn't a mechanism that that seat will continue to continually be, uh, uh, open. It literally is that for a period of, how long is your qualifying period? Like a week, two weeks?
One week.
One week. So it's, if you're literally talking about a difference of just days. Before what would kick in if it was after the qualifying dates in is the rest of the council would appoint the person. And so. We can do it. I certainly think that if you look at the statute that you provided. That that is a reasonable, if not even more correct interpretation. But it is not as if you're in limbo land. You do have a mechanism to fill that seat.
So, so based on what you know about. I mean, uh, based on what we have currently in our charter, then the council would. Have the authority to appoint somebody.
Yeah, ordinarily, the way this works and that, what's weird about this thing is that is the qualifying period. Because ordinarily, if a person is unopposed. They're declared elected and that can happen because the candidate that's opposing them drops out. Or they're the only person to qualify. So this is this kind of unique period where one person is qualified. You know, right up front, nobody else is yet qualified. But during this one week period, that person changes their mind. So you have nobody in there. You could still get somebody during that period, right? Someone could say, oh, well, if they're dropping out, let me find my run down there and fill my papers tomorrow. Um, and so it's, it's such a unique circumstance. And we know that right after the qualifying period is concluded, council appoints. It may be, we can do something about it, but I think the chances of it getting used are slim. But again, to your point, and you're not wrong, the statute would indicate. That there should be some provision for this, even though it seems insane to me.
Well, and like, um, like I told Mike, you know, I did some research and I found that there are municipalities that have language. In their charter specifically for this and Largo, where Mike came from was one of the cities that, you know, that I found. So I, I just didn't know if that was something that we needed to look at.
Well, you can look, it's, it can be in your charter, no question about it. But I would think if you were going to go down the road and you're doing it because you really want to make sure that there's no chance you're not in compliance. Then don't leave it to chance with voters. Just put it in ordinance and do it in two meetings and be done it and call it a day. Because the likelihood of you'll ever have to use that ordinance, not great, but at least it'll be on the books.
Okay, um, another issue that I wanted to bring up because this came up back in two thousand and four. When we were doing the height referendum and there were two conflicting referendums on the ballot. Um, we don't have anything in our charter that says. What would happen if two conflicting referendums pass? Um, however, other city charters do have that language and I pulled it from, from several city charters. Um, and so, you know. I, I realize it's not something that we would expect to happen very often, but you know.
Weird things happen. I've been in a tight election before.
But back in two thousand and four, I mean, it was a, it was, it, it could have been a reality because, um. Yeah, just the whole situation, the, the language, the language. Um, in the alternate referendum, people were getting confused about it. They thought that that alternate referendum was also limiting the heights of buildings to thirty five feet because the language had thirty five feet in it. So anyway, um. My, my thought was that that's something that has come up in Jack's Beach and if we could add the language to the charter. It's there in case we ever have that happen again.
I, I can come up with some language that attempts to deal with it, but I, I must admit, I haven't seen such language before. I'm confident that it exists, but it's a, it's a curiosity. I'd love to, I'm, I'll be interested to know most likely the method. Because if you truly have two conflicting provisions, how would you fix that? Say, well, the one that got the most votes wins and that may be how they do it.
That is exactly, they all, they all say that. Um, yeah, and I, I have a document that I put together that I shared with Mike and Mike can. Send it to you. Didn't I share it with you, Mike, that had the ones or had it laid out, the, all the different ones, but anyway.
And I, I would wonder because, you know, a lot of these things are not as black and white as. This one says A and that one says B, A got more votes, so forget B, even though they both passed. And a lot of the situations, there will be portions of things that are not in conflict. So then what do I do?
So, um, where are my notes on that? Um. I'll have to find that document. I don't have it up, but, but yeah, some of them actually, some of them just specifically say. The one with the most votes prevails, but some of them say. That only the portions of the. Of the initiative or whatever, you know, that is in conflict. Then the one with the most votes that, that prevails. So it sounded like they were, you know, taking. You know, parts from.
Sure.
Both of them.
Well, and there's always the possibility too that. When, when the parts that conflict, one is ruled out over the other. That the parts of the ones that don't conflict nevertheless don't make sense either. So you, you'll never be able to come up with. The perfect charter that covers every possibility. So we always will know the answer. But I think this is a reasonable thing to suggest and then, uh, adding to the ballot at some point, whether it's this time or the next time. Uh, and if you want to do that, it'll be easy enough for me to come up with language that appears to be, for lack of a better way of putting it, the industry standard for municipal law.
Okay, and, and along with that, another thing that, I mean, because, well, this language actually. Was always part of initiative and referendum. And there's a lot of charters that have a section that's on initiative and referendum. Which seems to be focused on citizens being able to initiate. Changes in ordinance by initiative or referendum, correct? And because changes to the charter are defined by state statute. At least unless the, unless the. Right, specific to charter referendum, right? Um, but I, I looked and there's a lot of cities who have that section on initiative and referendum to give citizens that.
Ability to put stuff on the charter, yeah.
Well, not just the charter, but to actually.
Yeah, and the ordinance.
Ordinances, yeah, exactly.
One of the cities that I represent, town of Ponsonlet, has something where they can. If, if council passes an ordinance and citizens aren't happy about the ordinance. Then they can make a petition that, uh, requests that it be repealed. And if they get enough signatures, then it shall come back to the council to consider repealing. If the council refuses to repeal. Then those same petitioners can go through the process of getting it, uh, put on the ballot. To repeal the ordinance by ballot initiative in addition to the things that they can do to put in, an, uh, initiative on the ballot to change the charter. So both things are covered and that's an example. So I know what it is you're speaking of.
Right, exactly. And thank you for explaining it because I'm sure my colleagues probably understand it. Better with your explanation than I could have explained it, but, um, I will say that like. Our neighbor Atlantic Beach has this in their charter and then several other cities do. I did some research and found, I mean, like Largo, Surfside, Treasure Island, Deerfield Beach, Sanibel, Bay Harbor Islands. Daytona Beach, Naples, Delray Beach, Cocoa Beach, St. Augustine even has it in their charter. Um, and then, um, I found some other information that, that said that. I think eight out of ten of the largest cities in, in Florida have initiative and referendum in there. You know, they have that, um, in their charter or whatever.
It's, it's not uncommon.
Right, and so for me, I'm thinking, well, if we're looking at the charter, I think we need to consider this because. Um, I think we, in, you know. Maybe it's something that we get some more information on and, and so that the rest of my colleagues can understand it better, but. But it's pretty standard, a lot of, I mean, all the ones that I found, but it's just. It seemed to vary as to how many signatures, you know, would be required, like Miami requires ten percent of. The electors, whereas Tampa, well, Tampa was ten percent, but then others might, uh, say fifteen percent or. Even twenty percent of the electors, you know, to be able to, to get it.
It's all, it's all over the board and, and you, you guys have actual districts where people are in certain seats, right? Um, and so a, as a good example, a, and this is something that was only recently changed in the Orange County Charter. And I think I'm, you all know that I did that charter review for well over a year and a half. Um, didn't cover nearly as much ground as we have, so congratulations to you guys. Um, but the interesting part of that is their provision for, uh, initiative and referendum petitions. Which is obviously, you know, we're in the millions here in the county, um, but it was, uh, to take what was a general number of X percent. And make it that percentage from each district. And boy, there was a lot of squealing about that, but that's ultimately what is now the situation. So it's not just, oh, well, I need, you know. Five thousand signatures, I need a certain number of those signatures from each district. In order to get this thing on. And so there's, there's a lot of ways to go about it and there are some limitations that you will should, should certainly strongly consider. For example, you, you do not want probably, uh, and I don't even know what would pass constitutional muster. And that's why you want to be careful about what you put in there, uh, something that says by referendum, they could try to change the tax rate, right? They can't, uh, and, and so there are certain things where they should kind of not be allowed to meddle. But.
Right, and I think all the ones, yeah, all the ones that I've read, they, they had those, they had that carve out, right, they had the carve out, yeah.
Mike, I see your hand.
I, I did, rather than try and dissect what should or shouldn't be in this section, perhaps we should see if there's a consensus from council. As to whether you guys want to consider adding this section. And if so, we'll have Cliff do the appropriate research and bring it back for a future discussion. So, uh, is there account, is there consensus from council if you want to have a further conversation about adding an element? On the initiative and whatever it was called.
Referendum.
Initiative and referendum.
Thank you. And I see heads nodding. So Cliff, I think the answer is yes. Um, would you like that brought back at the same time we have the further conversation on alcohol and the results of the height open house? No, I'm seeing separate.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. I think we can do it separate.
Okay, um, so Cliff, if you want to start taking a look, I, I don't, I can't remember if I sent it to you. But I'll forward the research that Sandy had already put together. From, from other cities and then you can obviously cross reference against some other. And go from there.
Yeah, I can do that, no problem.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up that, just put it out there, put it on the table, but Neptune Beach has. Just a very, very small section in their charter. It's just one sentence actually to preserve parks and parklands. Um, basically just saying that the city shall be prohibited from reducing the size of any parks or parklands without prior approval of the voters. I, I don't know if that's something that, you know, that people would be. Uh, concerned about or my colleagues would be concerned about making, making sure that we. Don't reduce the size of our park, our parklands in Jack's. Don't reduce the size of our park, our parklands in Jack's Beach, but um, I wanted to put that out there.
I see Ms. Huffman, Mayor Huffman.
Yeah, I would, um, I would be concerned about that, but I think if we put in the charter, I mean. What if there was a really good city need for reducing that, I mean, I don't know what that would be, but that seems like a. Step too far in tying our hands with our own property.
It's a policy consideration for sure and um, like a lot of things when you've, as you've learned from. Me having been around doing this for a while, I can, I can certainly tell you very clearly what are both sides. I'm dealing with this exact issue right now. Uh, under, it's not called parklands, it's called heritage lands. Uh, but in the city of Maitland, they have had for many, many years that preceded my being the city attorney there. Heritage lands provision in the, in the, their charter and it works this way. They take all city owned lands, all of them, not just parklands, and they classify them in one of three or four categories. Arts and historical, cultural, blah, 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 I forget them all. And whatever their classification, the heritage land uh referendum requirement says, A. If you're going to change them in terms of their actual or prospective use, so if you were going to change it, say from a park. To a public works water plant of some sort, you have to have a referendum. If you're going to sell them or otherwise dispose of them, you have to have a referendum. And uh, if you do, so, so if they're already classified park, you could take. The park that is a passive park and uh install benches and picnic tables. But if you change it to an active park, say a baseball field, that would require referendum. So that's the extreme. Uh, and how it's coming back to bite them, even though it got overwhelming voter support. Way back, you know, forty, fifty years, whenever it passed, is that there's now a single older home. Which has been used for the last thirty plus years as a bed and breakfast. The older couple that had it. Are now going to move to Maine and retire and they would like to move on. Um, they'd also like to be able to sell the business to somebody else to come in and operate the bed and breakfast. The problem is. That the Airbnb market has caused a headache and finding a successor has been a difficult issue, but more importantly. The city would be interested in doing something else with the land, but they can't do anything else with the land unless they go back to a referendum. So they can't sell it, they can't make it a single family home and which would sell for a ton of money in that location. Uh, or anything else without going to a referendum. And there's some concern that they would spend the money on the referendum and it wouldn't pass. So. That's the side of the argument that the mayor, I think, is kind of putting out there, which is, do we want to tie our hands in this way? From the other side, it's, the voters tend to like these things. So if you put it out there, there's a good chance it'll pass.
Well, and the reason I brought it up was because when we did our community conversations. There was a lot of, there was a lot of comment about people would like to see us have more green space and we know here in Jack's Beach. That we're pretty much built out. And so the chances of us, you know, adding green space are. Kind of limited, but, but the opportunities to sell that green space and lose that green space, you know. Are, could, there could be pressures for that, right? And I, you know. I wanted to put it out there because me personally, I wouldn't want to see us lose any of our park space. I wouldn't want to see us lose any of our green space, but. Um, I don't know, Mike, if there's, you know, if the comp plan helps to protect that for, you know, helps us protect. Our park space, um, and we don't really need to, you know, worry about it, like. With a charter amendment or, but still, I just wanted to put that out there based on the feedback we got from the community conversations.
Yeah, I, I did want to just comment on that, you know, you brought up a good point with regard to the comp plan. Um, if it's not already in the comp plan, there should be goals for green space. And to achieve those goals and maintain those goals going forward. Uh, and I also wanted to remind council that several months ago. Council approved a policy with regards to disposition of property. And any property that was in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars of value needed to be brought back to city council. For any consideration on disposition. So basically there would be a public process to go through for the sale of any land, whether that's park. Lift station, whatever the case might be, uh, and that's not something that can be done administratively without the community knowing it would take place. So it, it, it puts itself in the public forum. So I think between that and the comp plan, we should be pretty well covered. For the preservation of green space going forward. You also still have the option that if you want to put deed restrictions on the property. Uh, that would be another route you could go rather than putting it within the charter. If there are certain parks within the city where you wanted to put deed restrictions that they only be used for park purposes. You could do that so that at some point in the future they were sold, they still have a restriction in place as to what they can be used for. Um, so those are just some other thoughts, but I, I think there are some options other than putting it into the charter.
I think Mr. Man is next.
Um, thank you. I agree with the Mayor Hoffman. That we don't want to tie our hands. Parklands are assets and while we will not. As things currently stand, we would see no need to sell those assets or release those assets from um city ownership. In the future, it may, may not, it may need to come to that. If there were a council that decided just to do that for like willy nilly, because you know their best buds. Are a developer and they want to build something on South Beach Park, well, then the electorate will deal with them and um, I'm. And I think that that is a safe way to do it. The, um, and we have the deed restrictions, we have all of these other ordinances. I just don't see tying our hands. Um, with releasing assets, any, anything beyond what the ordinances are already. Already prescribing on how we would sell off assets.
And Mayor Hoffman?
I just wanted to say, and Mike already hit on the point of deed restrictions. There probably are already some existing in, in places like Gonzalez Park and uh Tall Pines where land was um. Given to us by the property owners and since I'm just sitting here looking right at it. To give you guys the example, the History Park, which a lot of people don't think of as a city park, but it is city property. Um, is deed restricted. So this is arguably the most marketable piece of property, um. Right now that is considered a park and we can never develop it or sell it because if we did, it would automatically go back to the state of Florida. So. So there may already be protections in place that, that we aren't even aware of. So just wanted to make that point.
And Mr. Jansen.
I just wanted to add that with the implementation of the urban trails, um, I think that's going to help. Kind of lock things in place as well. And I, I would be concerned about unintended consequences. Exemplled by Maitland that you just gave us, that something that's unforeseen that we don't, we don't recognize or see right now. If we were to do, if we were to put it in a charter, so I like where we're going, keeping it outside the charter.
I am not seeing any more hands at the moment, Mike.
Neither am I.
All right, can I do a recap then? So I know sure that, that we're all on the same page.
One, one late hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Sorry, I was waiting until the conversation ended on that topic. Um. I was wondering if we should put something in to review. The charter every like seven years. I know Cliff said every five to ten. I don't know. If that should go in the charter or if we should make an ordinance. Um, to initiate charter review every seven years, but I know it's been a while since we've done it. Um, and with term limits, it would give basically, um. You know, each, each council basically would, would go through a charter review and, and possibly. Two, depending on if you serve um multiple seats, um. I would, I'd be in favor of it going in the, in the charter or uh, I would also be in favor of an ordinance, but I just. I want us to get a little bit more caught up on city documents and not go. Uh, fifteen, twenty, thirty years without uh addressing them.
Uh, let me, uh, we're going to go to Mr. Jansen next, but let me put out here that this should be a two-part question. And the first is, do you want to have some sort of prescribed period for charter reviews going forward? And if the answer to that is yes, then I'll discuss some options. I do agree with you, uh, Mr. Stokes, that the charter is the right place. Have that kind of stuff, but uh, there are a number of ways which we didn't discuss when I presented you, presented you with my. Suggested manner of reviewing the charter. And that's the way I like to do it. I think it works, but that's not the only way. So the first question is, do you want to have a timely review? Every so often, and if there's enough nods for that, then I'll explain. Uh, what are your options to consider and then draft accordingly? I'm seeing knotted heads. Are you seeing, you agree we got enough numbers to go? Okay, so let me give you some, obviously you're familiar with this process. But in the charter amendment, other, you can be as simple as saying, the charter shall be reviewed by Charter Review Commission. Uh, uh, the rules of which will be determined by the council members at the time, every fill in the blank number of years, three, five, seven, nine, whatever. That's one way. It's very simple. A more complicated way, at least in terms of the drafting, but nevertheless maybe one that you'd want to go through. Is to prescribe the method of the review. And by that I mean prescribed shall be reviewed. By the city council as opposed to an independent charter view of citizens appointed by council members. You can prescribe uh that each section will be reviewed, a report will be prepared. So the, the way that these periodic charter views are carried out, you can be very detailed. And not only the time period, but also the manner in which they'll be reviewed. So the, it's kind of option A and option B, which is the manner. There's a lot of different manners. So if you want option A, shall be reviewed every X amount of time, that's simple. Option B, we're going to have to have further discussion about, okay, what is it you want to mandate? Mr. Jansen?
So, question for you is, um. What do we lose and or gain by putting in an ordinance versus a charter?
Be, what do you lose? You don't lose anything uh per se, except the ability to quickly change it. And so if you say ordinance, it's every three years. Or five years and the council comes and says, we don't like that, we think that's too often, we don't need to do it, but every ten years. Doesn't go have to go to the citizens, whereas if it's in the charter, it can't be changed without going back to the same citizen. And so that's the, I don't know whether you consider that a loss, but that's the trade.
Okay, well, yeah, in my opinion, I'm in favor of having that review, so we, we don't run into some of the problems that we have run in with this review. So. Um, I guess the bigger conversation is what, what does that number look like? I don't know, is it seven years or ten years? Is there something that you see across the state that's, that's a normal number or is it just?
I don't. When I was city attorney for Mount Door, they were doing it every two and it was ridiculous. Uh, but I, I have more cities than not that don't have a specified time period and it just crosses somebody mind, mind. Hey, it's been a while since we reviewed the charter. If I, my gut tells me. That four to five years is about right, but if someone said, no, seven to nine sounds better. Okay, by me, uh, there's not a magic number to it, but the reason I say four to five seems right. Is because it just seems like today. There's so many changes that we don't anticipate in society and all kinds of different things. That we may decide that there's a need to regulate. And if it happens that on a five-year charter review or a four-year charter review. That there's nothing that needs changing, then it becomes a real short session. And this one was longer, even though I thought that for me personally, that it was very efficient. Because of how much had not been looked at in a very long time. Um, but then on a go-forward basis, assuming most, if not all of these changes get passed by the voters. Then you could see if you said, well, the next one will be five years from now, that you look at it. And I would imagine if anything is going to be getting attention, it'd be those same issues we put in the parking lot, right? Do we want to change the name of the city? Do we want to change the number of liquor licenses and do we want to do something with height? Um, I, I think most of the stuff will be probably stuff that's left alone, but there may be stuff that we can anticipate now. That will be an issue that will be like the ones that Ms. Golding raised that are add-ons. Things that we don't anticipate now, but we can say, hey, now that we see this, let's regulate it. So that would be my thoughts, but again, I don't, I don't have a dog in the fight as they say. So I guess question one then is, uh, is to figure out, do you want to just say how often and leave it at that? Uh, and say the rules can be determined by the council that's in place at that time? Is that, okay, that's easy for me, so no problem. Um, and then I guess I need, I'll tell you what, I can draft it with a blank, then y'all can suggest at the time that it comes forward. What year you want to put in it, whether it's two, four, five, seven, nine, whatever. Yeah, but the, the provision itself will draft itself, it'll be easy. Is there anything else, folks? Then let me go back and recap, uh, what I think we discussed tonight, so we're all on the same page. So first. We're not going to go into the name change now, but there will be a workshop or some sort of a event about that in the future, but that future is unspecified, I think. Uh, the liquor licenses, there will be a council briefing, uh, before which. Uh, Ms. Robinson and myself will try to see what we can find in terms of. Existing data or research that would support the limitation on the kinds of liquor licenses we're talking about from a standpoint of health, safety or welfare. Uh, regarding height bonuses, there'll be a committee meeting sometime, I think in January to discuss the language that we. Actually a version of the language that we saw, it's apparently been changed since I had it, um, and see how that goes over. Um, I will be putting together, based on lots of research, it's already been done. A resolution for the charter that deals with conflicting referendums. Yes, wait a minute, let me, let me go back, yes, and a provision for initiative and referendum, because one doesn't make sense without the other. Um, and we'll pull that together and bring that back for whenever our next get-together will be. And then a provision that involves timely charter review with a. Yet to be defined time period of what that will be and that will be discussed next time. That's what I have. Did I leave anything out, Mike, or did I misstate anything?
Think you got it all, Cliff.
All right. Folks, it's been a pleasure.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. We're, we're still going on to our next topic, but we appreciate uh. Your effort for tonight and getting us across the line with number sixty-six. And uh, we will be in contact with some of these ancillary items going forward.
So do I go or do I stick around for whatever's next?
You, you go and I'm turning the floor over to Sandy Robinson.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Cliff.
Bye-bye.
All right, it's my turn. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, council. Um, I appreciate your dedicating some time to me tonight. Our goal tonight is for you all to talk to me about your priorities and expectations for me in my office. As you know, I've been here for about three weeks as of today and I spent the first two weeks. Meeting with many of you and also directors individually to discuss preliminarily my, um. My goals for service delivery, as well as to find out what your individual priorities were. And so, um, those meetings, while they were very helpful. They really didn't help me put into any kind of sequencing. The priorities that were already discussed before I came on board. So I'm hopeful. That after we meet tonight, I'll have at least some understanding of those things that are still very important to you. And how they should work their, themselves in my list of things to do as more work is added. So before tonight's meeting, we generated this list of city attorney pending assignments. Requests and most of that list was compiled again before I started here. But a few items have been added since I've arrived and I'm, I would like to go through these. A section by section, if that works for you, to find out if these requests are still important. And if so, where they should be sequenced in my list of things to do. And. To the, on the other side of that, I'm, I'm assuming that you have additional things that you will want me to work on. So I'd like to learn about those tonight, figure out how they work relative to the things that are already pending. And finally. Uh, going forward, how would you like me to manage your priority list? The one that we formulate today. In other words, should I come back to council periodically and say, listen, since we. Formulated this pending list of priorities, additional other priorities have come up, how do you want me to work those in? Or shall I exercise some discretion? And manage the priority list based on what's before me at any given, given period of time. So. Looking forward to us answering those questions. I'll ask Mike, Mike, do you want me to handle this coin down the list one by one? Or shall I just open the floor and listen to? Whatever council has to offer relative to not only this list, but things that they brought into the meeting.
I think that's, I think that's really going to be up to you and council. My, my thought process would be, I think you've done a good job of categorizing them. As the, the A list, the city council list, those things that are high priority for the council. And then the B list, which is everything that's coming out of the senior administration of the city. And maybe department by department. So maybe just go by it in groupings and see if the council has any. Thoughts or insight into what they're seeing in each of those groupings, starting with the city council, the first eight items. That Sandy has, has come to realize she's inherited, which is everything from home-based business regulation. Through doing an MOU for opioid litigation and everything in between that's on the list. I know that Elise did a good job of tracking all of this prior to Sandy's arrival. And I, I think that when you see what's on the list, a lot of it is. Stuff that has been the, the council's high priority, especially the comprehensive plan, the land development code. The micro mobility ordinance, which is currently getting ready to expire in December. And we've not yet addressed that along with a handful of other issues. So, so maybe just in terms of starting with that first section, is there any council sees that's either missing that list? Or any specific insight you want to give her with regards to the eight that she sees in front of her as council priorities?
And I, I certainly didn't want to sort of defer to Mike on the, the priorities. I just wanted to make sure that I. Approach this in the manner that he thought was best for the conduct of the meeting. So Mayor Hoffman. And other members of council, I'd like to go through this list. And then as we go through it, you can add more and you can maybe further explain to me what. You were envisioning when this was originally put on the city attorney's list. So the first thing I have.
Sandy, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you really quick? Is there an opportunity to share your screen or something where we can actually see the list? Instead of just, because I mean, we can pretty quickly assess some things just visually. Is that an option?
I've got it.
Sweet.
How's that?
That's great. Thank you.
Very good. So thank you, Mike. And so if we start at that first. Item under city council, we have home-based business regulation. And the context in which I got that or what it was explained to me is to basically to look for our code to see what. Elements of a home-based business we could still regulate in view of some recent legislation out of the Florida. Legislature. So that's the context in which I have it listed here. I'm happy to supplement that with more information. But where should that be positioned relative to the other items?
I can't see hands raised by sharing my screen.
I have my hand raised. I'm the only one. What, what I was gonna say was, and looking at. I'm looking at it from thirty-five thousand feet. I like six, seven and eight as, as priorities, the comprehensive plan and land development code in the opioid litigation for me. When it comes to that grouping, also stepping back. I like the idea of you just, you know, delegating or your discretion rather, your discretion of. Of how you want to handle these things as your workload comes in. I think you're quite capable of doing that and you should be the one doing that, not, not bringing it to us. So. That's my feelings on grouping A and your discretion.
So councillor Jansen, would you keep them in that order? And not necessarily six, seven, eight, but one, two, three in terms of, of sequencing.
Well, and again, I think in my sequencing, I would have six, seven and eight be. One, two and three.
I can't.
Or maybe I just need glasses. All right, there it is. It's much better.
Chet has his raise, hand raised, and then I do.
Thanks, George. I was just about to say, I don't know which one of us was first. Sandy, I agree with Dan. I think you, you know. Utilize your discretion and what you need to. I think it's something that. I recognized during the interview process and I think that you can use your discretion to. You know, decide what is most pressing at the time and, and shuffle projects as need be. I would agree with six, seven, eight as being a priority. I think my only switch is I would put the LDC. Kind of number one, along with the comp plan, because they do need to work hand in hand, but. I think we have some more pressing LDC issues, such as the outdoor seating. And I believe we talked about doing the Code of Ethics training in January, so with our new board members. So you have a little bit of time there. When we talked about the micro mobility ordinance. You know, it's something that I, I really am passionate about, but when we talked, it's, you know, I didn't have a problem extending the. Moratorium if need be to give you more time. And then, you know, one, two and three, I think are things to work on as you have time. Try to be concise.
All right, thank, I thank you for that. And for the other members of council, let me just loop you in briefly in. The conversation that I had with councillor Stokes when we met. We spoke in general about the micro, micro mobility ordinance. And we also discussed in very short order, the possibility of maybe extending the, the moratorium for about a ninety day period. So that I could get up to speed and be able to come into. The process and contribute in a, in a meaningful way. And we believed. That keeping our eye on beating that December twenty-one deadline pressed me on that in light of the other things that were also. New to me and that I would have to get under my belt in a short order of time. So. There hasn't been a decision, obviously, on extending that moratorium, but our conversation did briefly go there. Thank you. Are, are there any more hands raised, Mike? I can't see.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm up next and then Fernando is once I'm done. I agree with what's been said already. I'm thinking about. One, you, you're the expert and so a lot of discretion lies in your court. How I look at this list here is long-term impact on the city or it's. Or the weight and or the weight of what each one does. And so the comprehensive plan. Is key because it's, it's out of the comprehensive plan that the land development code aligns. So those two things are definitely two of the top pieces. And just making sure that they align with the strategic plan, which we've just completed recently. Opioid litigation. I don't see that as taking as much time because it's just an MOU. And I, I would think that COJ would be willing to, you know. Work hand in hand to make, just make sure that everybody's made relatively whole-ish. With what we've all gone through with that. Code of Ethics training gets pushed up to the top because, not to the top top, but. Close up because of the January timeframe in which we're looking at doing that. So what I'm trying to do is balance out. The timeline and that frame as long as the urgency and importance of the issue itself. Micro mobility, we can push that off just because that is something, it will, it will. Engender a deep discussion. Balloon, short-term rentals, home-based businesses, those are all important, but they are not. Critical at this point in time. Specifically with home-based businesses and short-term rentals, we're looking at. What kind of space we still have, given how much our hands are tied from state legislation. So there we're just playing with the margins. And then the balloons, it's a huge environmental piece. But. It's important, but there are other things that are more important for the long-term health and vitality of the city.
Councillor Mesa?
Yes, I'm with councillor, Chet Stokes on number six, number seven, being, going hand in hand and being on the top priorities. And obviously, the Court of Ethics training moved somewhat to the top and then everything else just follows in line. Obviously, home-based business regulation. It's important, but right now I think the most pressing issues that we have is just on the comprehensive plan and land development code. That's it.
So when we move down, members of council to the planning and development. Department, you'll see that. The comp plan and the land development code, while they're not specifically mentioned, a lot of the things that are, are. To be addressed there falls into some of the revisions that are anticipated or foreseen for the LDC. So. I believe that. The two items that everyone has identified, the revision of the LDC and the revision or the review of the comp plan. Are also major priorities for the planning and development department. As that has been mentioned through the administration many times as well. If, if there are no other questions on the items that were specifically listed under council. Are there any additional requests or priorities that council wants me to incorporate at this time?
Sandy has her hand up now.
Yeah, Sandy, well, and for our, for all my colleagues, my question is with regard to the comp plan and the LDC. How much of Sandy's, how much of Sandy's time? Is going to be involved in that versus a consultant? Because I believe I've heard that there. That, that that would be something that we would be. Looking into as a consultant to help us work through the comp plan and LDC review.
I can, I can speak a little bit to that. I can tell you that in my conversations with Heather, and I know she's on the call listening. We are looking at bringing in an outside consultant to assist with both of those processes, preferably using the same firm for both. And the goal would be that whoever does the comp plan work is also doing the LDC work, so they can make clear linkage between the two. Knowing what was done in one and needs to be carried over to the other. With regards to Sandy's specific involvement. If we're using a legal firm, she obviously would be involved in some of the attorney oversight. Of, of that sub attorney that would be working for the city. If it is a, a planning consulting firm that we are using. Sandy will probably be taking a look at some of their work product for legal conformity, because we'll probably go through things, sections at a time. So really, until we know who we're using and what their specific skill set is. I don't know that we have a full idea of what the impact on Sandy's time commitment will be. But we are planning on using outside resources to plow through both of those two items. We do have them identified as strategic plan initiatives because they were two items identified by council. And Heather has already started assembling an RFQ to get that ball rolling right as we wrap up the charter review. Elements. So after the first of the year. Specifically when we don't know, but sometime after the first of the year, we'll be diving into the comp.
Councillor Golding, I, I appreciate your bringing up that point. I think I do remember. Heather mentioning bringing on a consultant. And I think in view of the, the extended comments shared by the city manager. We might want to consider for the moment just having those particular items, six and seven. Sort of taken off the, a priority as for me, and then it just sort of working itself into my schedule. As a review and approval, whether it's, if it's with a, a consulting firm that's mostly technically based. The review and approval would be more extended. And obviously, if there's a law firm that's doing the drafting. The review and approval, if, if required at all by my office, would be fairly minimal. That's one way of looking at that. And then we can truly formulate a list of priorities that makes sense. For, for my office and in, in terms of setting expectations because. You know, my view coming into this was that there would be a, a lot more. Oversight might be the wrong word, but certainly a lot more involvement in terms of my time. On these two particular projects. If that's not the case. You know, maybe setting it as a priority is a misnomer.
Well, I. I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry.
I would just say, though, I think that, and I, I, for the record, the comp plan and the LDC review is. Is important for me as well. And I think that. Maybe what I'm hearing is that. We need you to just make sure that you, that, that you keep it a priority as far as what you're doing. Whatever your role is. And, and then, you know, the other things, you know, if there's some other things that, that. You need to spend more time on, that's fine, but the comp plan and LDC, when it comes to those things. You know that those things will be a priority, you know, you're, you need to make sure that you're putting. Putting those as a priority in the whole scheme of things, maybe.
Sure. And I, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get clarity on, I think it's, it's wonderful that this is a priority, but again. From my standpoint, if it's identified as a priority for me, the focus would be on sort of the. The demand of time and what has to be carved out in my schedule on any given day. I'm certainly recognizing it as something that's time, both time sensitive and a priority for council. If it comes across my desk, of course, it's going to get, you know, immediate attention. But. When I look at a list of priorities, it's like, what do you have to do? And is there a deadline that you have to achieve rather than to. Sort of monitor what is going on by other attorneys even that could take several months. It just kind of throws the, sort of the treatment of priorities off. When things really don't require that level of attention on a day-to-day basis. Or that degree of. You, you know, involvement. So if, if you can keep that in mind, just from my perspective, I'd appreciate that. And so even though this might come off my list of priorities, it doesn't mean it's less important to the organization. And that it's going to be parked over in the corner. It just simply means that. Where your involvement is required, Sandy, this is not the place. But we do want you involved, you know, whatever that means. So I, I, I just need that kind of feedback in this moment, if that's possible.
And the, the other, the only other thing I would add, I, sorry, Georgette, I, I. Georgette's got her hand up, so she'll be next. Just to. Add a few more comments, the micro mobility ordinance, I would just, I would just say that. You know, if we extend the moratorium. And I, I think we're, we're all probably thinking about this, you know, it's something that. We need to decide, do we want to try to get this addressed before the peak season starts up again, you know, and, and. So that may put some kind of timeframe on it, you know, when we start to have. Visitors coming to the city, you know, in larger numbers, which may be more in the April timeframe, maybe, or something like that. Otherwise, yeah, the home-based businesses and the regulation of short-term vacation rentals, I mean, those are things that. They're not major efforts really that, you know, because. They are what they are, but. My feeling about the short-term rentals is just. Whatever, whatever oversight may be needed because we're not having, we're not having good compliance. with our regulation that is in place. And then to Ms. Dumont's point, the, the balloons and the skylanterns are important environmentally, but I would not say that it's, at this point, given all the things that need to be done, I, I wouldn't say that it's going to be higher up on the priority list at all. But would be something that I think we would like to address at some point. But I would, I would be okay with it being further down on the list for sure, until we can get to a point where you can actually try to add something to your plate.
Counselor Dumont?
Yeah, since with how you've reframed this, with knocking out six and seven as waiting, you know, oversight of what the external attorney does, Code of Ethics Training goes right up to the top. That is something that we need to make sure that council and appointed officials all know what it means and how it relates to situations we may find ourselves in, just to make sure that we stay above board and we are able to build citizen trust. For me, that's critical. Then after that, it would, micro-mobility, I'm okay with that getting pushed off a bit until, as Ms. Golding noted, closer to peak time, depending on, on your timeframe. While I'm saying all this, I'm, I'm also well aware that you don't only have us that you are doing this stuff for. You have all of the departments. And I know that the previous city attorney had a very full plate to make sure that he was addressing the needs of all the different departments within the city. So I'm going, Code of Ethics Training for me is key. Oversight of comprehensive and land development code is also very important. The others, I think I would leave it in your discretion when you think, because they're all important, but you would know how you can fit those best to balance out council demands as well as with department needs. Because as a council, we want to make sure that all our departments are legally sound. They understand the risk of what they do, what, of what they're facing. And I think by giving you a little bit more leeway to give you some more time to focus on what the department's need, it will be better for the city overall, instead of just some of these, I don't want to say one-off issues, but short-term rentals, it's going back again in front of the Florida Legislature and it's going to either narrow down or it will never expand. So it might narrow down and it might take a couple more rules away. And is that the best use of your time for the city? Given all of the issues that our residents are dealing with at this time. So comprehensive, comprehensive plan and land development code, as they cross your board or, or your desk, but at least we'll put it on your board. Code of Ethics Training is really critical in, in my book because of how, how central that is to the decision-making within the city. And the rest, as you are able to chip away with those in, in balancing out that in the importance, what each department within the city needs to have done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Counselor Golding?
Yeah, I would just add and follow up to what Ms. Dumont just said about the short-term rentals. Regardless of what the state does, we have regulations that we passed a couple of years ago. Those regulations were passed to protect our, our residential neighborhoods. And I, to me, if we have short-term rentals that are not complying with our regulations, that impacts our community negatively. And so I really don't see that as being something that we just don't look at, because the state may do something with it. I feel we have to, we, it, it need, it's something that we have to stay on top of, because it impacts quality of life. And so, you know, I just don't want to.
Isn't that more of a compliance? It's not creating new regulations. It's, it's implementing the regulation that we already have, which falls outside the city attorney and more into the different departments that should be, or hopefully would be implementing the ordinance that we already have.
But, but based on what our previous city attorney said, he, he felt that he would have some involvement in the compliance. There may be a need for him to be involved in some of the compliance. And so that's why I feel like I don't want it to just be put in a parking lot.
I guess I'm not sure how it would fall in. The city attorney would be involved in the compliance unless it would be risk of trying to get somebody to follow a rule that's already in place.
May, may I jump in on this one? I'd like to go through what the local regulations are and see if I view the office's involvement in compliance, other than maybe going before the special magistrate on some kind of code violation or violation. That's the only thing I can see right now. If there are existing regulations and the census compliance would be the only thing that we have in play going forward in view of the state legislation. I can report back to council in terms of, you know, what my opinion is, what my view is in terms of the potential demand on this office relative to short-term rentals. If that is something that you like to hear, I can communicate that via email or make a report to you verbally at one of your, your future briefings. But I would like to see what it is that caused the former city attorney to state that there would be somewhat regular involvement, maybe from the city attorney's office. Does, does that work for all of you or?
That works for me.
Okay, so I, I'll just get with Mike to see, you know, what times are available on the briefing schedule to see if I can get some time to report back to you. And it shouldn't take a lot of my time to just look and, and opine. And if it, if it is, as I suspect, just going into either court or the special magistrate for enforcement, obviously, that wouldn't be necessary without the issuance of a, of a violation. I'm scrolling down the list. I don't see any more hands. If we go to the next session, which is the senior administration, everything that I've listed here were, first of all, in, in most instances, items that were already on the list when I arrived. However, I met with every one of these directors since I, I arrived. And all of these items that fall below their direct, their departments are matters that are still of priority for them. So many of them I've started to work on in the instance of the city clerk. I've given her a deadline for me producing the information that she's requested by November 19. If you go down to the finance directors section, there are a lot of things, many of which will take some time. But I've already started to meet with her staff in terms of formulating the changes that are necessary for their, the city's procurement policy and manual. And from that, we will make amendments to the ordinance. I've collected all of the bid documents. I've collected the existing contracts that need to be revised over time. And also, I've got the file for the dial-a-rise. So there's quite a bit of work that's already started relative to these many items. In terms of a deadline, the, the most important item for finance is the, the updated procurement manual. And again, coupled with the amendments to the procurement ordinance. We have, we are shooting for a six-month timeframe on that. I don't think we'll need six months, but she said, no, no more than six months from now. She'd like to have an adopted amended ordinance. So that's what we'll be working on as a long-term priority in that department. On a more shorter-term deadline is number A. So we have a Tyler Munis software system. We've obviously entered into a fairly involved agreement. Some of that agreement provided terms for which we have not been able to utilize for a number of reasons. She is interested in getting some credits due to the delay and getting those sections of the software implemented. And so we're going to work on that as a short-term deadline. Everything else is important. I don't think it will take six months to complete all of the items here. But I will just articulate that she identified that six-month period as her sort of deadline for the procurement manual. We will meet that, and I'm sure by that time, we will have met all of these other deadlines for production as well. Under the fire marshal, which follows that, that opinion has already been issued. So it's something that can be marked off the list of things to do. Some of the research that went on for the fire marshal's request can be rolled over and utilized for parks and rec for their special food truck project. Everything else is something that's been identified by the director. I believe that too is something that can be done within a relatively short period of time. The things that might take some time, simply because they're not very, the, the control or the pace of the work isn't really controlled by all internal forces, are those projects that are falling, falling below the planning and development department. If you look in the middle of that line of requests, the monitoring assisting has requested for the beach marine development agreement or agreement relative to adventure landing development agreement. All of these things are, require a lot of coordination with people who are outside of the city, whether it's the developer's attorney, the developer's representatives, or other factors. So as with the revisions for the LDC and the comp plan, the city has already utilized the services of outside council. And the instance of the beach marine development agreement, I was privileged to sit in on a discussion with outside council on that about a week ago. And I will continue to monitor those items that are being handled by outside council. But I, I, I don't see that as taking, or those particular items as taking a great deal of my time other than to sort of offer insights to my client and have those passed on to the outside council. If, if I think those things have not either been given any consideration or maybe we want to look at them from another viewpoint. If you look at the other items, like drafting the deeds with reversion rights, these will be form deeds for us to utilize when transferring or selling property. They will be tailored for a particular transaction. But the, the format deeds will be relatively easy to draft with consultation with the planning director to make sure that what she wants to happen and propose to council to approve is what is actually being reflected in the documents. But in terms of time pressures, I don't think those things will take a lot of time. The last item on this, the creation or the possibility of creating a new zoning classification, she's already identified the, the possibility of utilizing outside council or an outside technical firm to help us in this regard. So again, my role relative to five F will be that of basically oversight and then review and approval at the back end of the process. So if you have any questions on that particular section, I'm certainly open to hear those because of just the impact planning and development has, not only on council's list of priorities, but also the city as a whole. Okay, I don't see any hands there. We roll down to public works. This is an assignment that has been satisfied. And the, the draft assignment that was prepared, was prepared with an eye of, to using it as a template and future assignment. So council will actually end up getting a bird's eye view of this particular form, because in this particular instance, the, the assignment needs to be approved by council. And as an aside, because of the, the terms of the underlying agreement, the city will get a $25,000 assignment fee to, to consent. So we're kind of pleased with that outcome. But that assignment has been completed since this list was prepared. I don't see any hands. So we go down to the claims. These are pretty much old claims. And I, I don't think any of them, the most recent is this June 5, 2020, as a matter of fact. Some claims are coming in as we speak, but these were the claims in place at the time the list was prepared. As in terms of the 7A, there's a possibility that time has run on that. But we are, we are working through our, our third-party risk management company. And so those claims aren't being handled directly by the city attorney's office, but we are keeping an eye out on how they are being processed. So those were the things in combination that were informed to me when I came on board, supplemented since I've been on board. And I've gotten several requests since. But we're handling those in the fashion that I would any other, in other positions where work came in and I needed to get it out in a timely fashion. So again, I'm open to hear what additional things you would like me to put on my plate and also hear the expectations for turning around requests in the future. And I do see that Counselor Dumont has her hand up.
Yeah, the, the, what I don't see on here is the billboard case. And linked with the billboard case is the JTA case of mini billboards on the bus seats, the bus benches. Although I think that a lot of them are down now. I, last time I went, I don't leave the house too much, but last time, last couple of times I've gone out, I haven't seen them. But I could not be looking in the same places that I saw them in, in the past. I haven't heard one way or another from the people who normally contact me about them, whether they are still up or down. But a lot of that needs to, a lot of that, both cases are integral in the relationship between Jack's Beach and the county. Because in both instances, the entities who are advertising have contracts with the, with Jacksonville or Duval County. But those contracts go outside what our LDC says you can have. But because it's, because it's a county contract, they're saying they can have a billboard out here or they can have those large signs advertising on our bus benches, I guess is what I'll call them. I didn't see that on here. And I know that's kind of a big one, because we have one billboard in the city, one. One, and it fell down in a hurricane and they put it back up in the shadiest way possible. And we're trying to get it back down now.
Okay, there, there was a mention and I'm, I'm I'm at a loss as to whether or not it came with a case name at the time. But there, there was a mention that there was a billboard case pending, but it was pending on appeal. And as I understand it, the, I was just going to say, the billboard owner had lost at every step in the appellate process. And the only issue that was remaining unresolved was a payment that was due to the city. That's the recollection of the billboard case. Again, a- as I remember it at this moment, I can get some specifics for you through Elise, who's been just wonderful and have her update me on all of the pending billboard cases and then pass that on to you all, just to make sure that you have an accurate status of what, where things are. But my understanding is whatever was out there is really sort of in a whole pattern and in whole pattern at the appellate level.
Yeah, Mike should be able to fill us in on that. And Mike, you, I was, you're the person, you are my point person on the bench thing. So I don't know where any of that, if it, if, if they're any longer needed to go in front of the city attorney or they've been worked out with contracts.
Yeah, we'll start with the SLG case. You may remember there was a shade meeting months ago that I believe brought council up to speed with where we were at. And Sandy hit the nail on the head. Right now, it's kind of in a hold pattern while they're going through. But I think would basically be their last exhaustive appeal. Because really the next step after that would be State Supreme. And I'm not sure the State Supreme Court's going to hear that particular case. So we are in a bit of a holding pattern on that one in particular. So Sandy's involvement is really oversight of the outside council, since we do have outside council representing us on that one. The issue with the benches, I'll, I'll check with code enforcement tomorrow. That was really more of a code enforcement issue from a starting point. I believe at this point we have achieved voluntary compliance. I believe those signs have come down off of the benches. I think I had reference to several of you that the city of Jacksonville was in litigation with the company that was posting the signs on the bus shelter, on the bus benches. And we did have a consult with one of our attorneys, which I won't go into. But for the long and short of it is, we were starting to go down the code enforcement path with the company. And I believe we ultimately achieved voluntary compliance, but I'll confirm that and we'll let you know.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Then Sandy, yeah, don't worry about any of those things. These last five minutes did not happen. Just let it suck out of your head.
Well, I'm, I'm ready, I stand ready to help with the oversight and lend a hand to outside council. I certainly have been trying to make sure that they know that when I've had the pleasure of talking to them or meeting with them. But I, I just want to make sure that in terms of walking away from tonight's meeting, that we're all on the same page as to, you know, where my, my interest and my focus will be in terms of meeting the deadlines, the most immediate deadline. So what I got from tonight's meeting is that based just on removing the LDC and the comp plan over to another column as sort of the top, at the top rung of monitoring for timeliness through the departments, through outside council or outside experts. My role will be basically review and approve. And the first item, based on time, would be the Code of Ethics, which is the Code of Ethics Training scheduled in January. And then followed by that, and if we go back up to that list, Mike, again, based on a temporal standard, because the season, the beach season will be starting in a few months, I would think that the micromobility ordinance issue would kind of work its way up in that second position because it has to go through so many levels of, well, first of all, there's the drafting part of this, but also to bring it back to council for council to discuss and further consider in terms of not only the moratorium, but also as an option as to what you replace the existing legislation with. If anything, or as an option to be labeled as a, as a a pilot program, however you want to see it. But again, because the beach season is going to start relatively soon, we need to kind of look at the timeline that we don't control and sort of act accordingly. So the micromobility ordinance to me kind of moves up to that second position. And then relative to the other items that are not six and seven, the opioid litigation, my office really is sort of in a whole pattern until we get something from Jacksonville. I believe I've already reviewed what I think will be a form document sent to all the sub recipients, which Jacksonville Beach would be a sub recipient for whatever is received in this opioid settlement. I would think the next thing to do would be to work on the, the balloon, Sky Lantern legislation and report back on the rental, the vacation rental. And just to report out, that can be done fairly quickly without a huge demand on time. But that's where I see it. Code of Ethics, micromobility, Sky Lantern legislation, and also to sort of, in that same timeframe, report back to council on the city involvement, the city attorney's involvement relative to enforcing short-term rental regulation. And also just simply, again, to tie the knot on the home-based business regulations. See if there's something available at the local level that we can still exercise some degree of authority over in view of the state legislation. So if, if that sounds right to you, I'd appreciate a thumbs up. Or if you want to reshuffle that, I guess this is the time to do it, perhaps.
Sandy, Councilmember Jansen and Golding both also had their hands up and seeing nods and thumbs up. I don't know if you can see.
I, I see two hands. I see Council Jansen and Golding. I don't know which one came first.
So I think I was up first. The, under claims, the only thing I wanted to remind you of, because you mentioned the oversight of the outstanding fine. Also bear in mind the removal of that billboard as well. So that's not just the fine, but also the removal. Make sure that both of those are covered. Also, at the end of the day, I feel like, well, for myself, and I feel like I'm getting the same from my colleagues, is that we trust your discretion and handling the priority of things here. So we're going to rely on your discretion to, to moving forward, at least I will. And I think that, that we can trust in, in your decision-making, moving, moving forward with all these items.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And Sandy, I would just add, sorry, I, I, I think what you, what you stated as the priorities, I mean, I think that sounds good to me based on what everyone has said to this point. The only other thing that I was going to mention that I, and this was something that Ms. Dumont brought up at one of our meetings, and I don't see it on the planning and development list, but that has to do with parking for townhomes. I thought that was something that was, that we wanted to have a discussion with the city attorney on that or, and planning and development on, because we're, we're having issues there. And Ms. Dumont could speak up, but that is something I don't see in that list that I was thinking would be there.
That's actually, that's actually going to be a, a planning and development initiative. They'll actually bring that to a briefing after the first of the year for discussion with council. There will be some conversation that we need to have with Sandy behind the scenes to make sure that what staff ultimately brings forward from a proposal perspective is legal. But that's basically going to be initiated by Heather and her staff.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mayor Hoffman?
Thank you, Councilmember Dumont. I, I wanted to apologize first. I've been kind of over the river and through the woods. I started off in the Pioneer Cabin. I didn't think I was going to end up as a modern-day pioneer sitting in my car with my phone plugged in. But I was able to listen, so I'm sorry I wasn't able to weigh in earlier. But I just wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues to say that we really do rely on your judgment on prioritization and reshuffling of things and that you'll know when you need to kind of check in with us. If, if you start peeling the onion and it is a much bigger project than what you initially thought. And I do think that that was part of what happened with short-term vacation rentals, was that the, the amount of non-compliance was a lot more than what was originally anticipated. But I think that's something to be worth looking into. But if you start opening something up and it's a lot more, you know, I, I would trust you to check in with us on, do we want you to keep putting in your valuable staff time? I also wanted to thank you for, I know you had helped putting this list together, but it just shows a tremendous amount of, of work, getting to know the department heads and getting to know the issues that are facing them. And to be able to even get that list put together. And I'm, you know, I know Elise has been keeping her finger on the pulse of things that are going on. But I just thank you for putting that together. And I hope that this is a document that will, you'll continue to update and evolve and keep in front of us periodically because I think it'll be really valuable for us to see not just what's going on the list, but what's being accomplished and moving off of the list.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. It will do. So if there are no additional comments, Mike, I think I am done with my portion of the agenda.
Good, because I'm done as well. Unfortunately, with briefings, we always ask if there's any, actually, no, this wasn't a full briefing. This was a charter review, so I'm not going to ask any more questions. I'm going to tell everybody, thank you for your time and attention tonight. Everybody have a great evening, a great Friday and a great weekend. And we'll see you all next Monday at the regular city council meeting, starting at 6 o'clock in the council chambers.